The three things to consider.
Let's see, one of the things that's up. Deal with it. I mean, I get people.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I think so. No, it's chicken.
Here.
Yeah. It's almost like. They had a better. Hmm, it's kind of a sad spell.
I don't know here. They fresh air every.
Yeah. It's a good show.
Okay. Yes, sir, the following is six great persons we want to perform. All being to orders. Praise for pledge of visions. The pledge of visions is from the state of America. And to your family, for which the sex, what nation, the river. In the this call for the refreshing justice. Evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting. All those who are present physically here, those who are attending remotely. So we all have the agenda set out to us. There's been a couple of changes. We've added enclosure eight point three, be discussion superintendent position. And eight point four, motion to engage NSBA to conduct superintendent search. So those two new items to it. And then we're going to move one thing. We're going to move the presentation by Principal Bushy. And that be not educational and nine point one, that's going to become part also of the elementary principals report. So those are changes. Anyone have any questions regarding the agenda? If not, then I'll give promotion approve the agenda.
I'll shoot you.
Second. Is with a motion by a director, monitor, I mean, to hit her Marcus, sorry.
Okay.
Supposedly by Greg romantic. To approve nice agenda. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, consent agenda. Now that consists of minutes regular meeting in January twenty twenty, two thousand twenty-two, computer checks in hand, payables, payroll checks and direct deposits. Anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda? All right, a promotion and would move tonight's consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so if a motion by a director where segment by Rep. Kristen to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Public comments? Anybody from public wish to comment? Okay, public comments. Done moving on with student staff constituent first. So walking elementary leaders, Miss Amanda, you're on, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. Um, I have today Landon Bushy and Bethany Richardson from fifth grade. And they're here to talk to you about the fun things that have been happening at Mogulson this last month. Landon, did you want to start?
Sure. Okay, um. I'm talking about kindness week. Uh, we have a bunch of dress up days. And um, we have cake pop sales by sweet treats by Sheila. And we made fifty-five dozen cake pops. And we sold them and we made six hundred dollars to use toward our next project. And then the kindness challenges, there's a new challenge every day. One is smile at five people, another help a teacher or classmate, invite someone new to sit or play with you, compliment five people and be kind to our school by keep keeping the bathrooms and hallways, lunchroom and classrooms clean. And we are drawing and giving like prizes for one winner in each grade every day.
Thanks, Landon. Do you have any questions for Landon about kindness week at Mogulson?
Prizes you give away.
Uh, like, uh, donuts and ink suckers.
Beautiful. This was very good. Like one of those cake pops. We raised six hundred dollars. That's amazing. That's a great, great.
And we got a big smile on Landon. I think you take care of the smiles for the rest of the week.
Bethany, do you want to talk about um, the random acts of kindness that the student leaders have been doing this month?
Yeah. So we've been doing a kindness challenge, like random acts of kindness, where we would go around doing random acts of kindness in our community or school. And so we would have to do five. And what I did is I made cookies and then my dad and I, we went to a nursing home and gave them to some people. And other people have done like leaving kind notes for teachers, paying for the people behind in the drive-through, leaving money and leaving money and vending machines, bringing donuts to community workers, bringing flowers to the nursing home, leaving money for someone to get a free paper at the Thirteen Towns, bringing treats to the police, leaving money at the movie theater, and uh, leaving detergent at laund- laundromat.
Is that everything with me?
Yeah.
Something like that. A lot of nice acts in the community. Thank you.
It doesn't end just one. Just one quick question. You know, taking thanks to the nursing home, are you allowed actually in to visit the residents yet, or is that still off limits?
You can still visit people, but you're gonna have to wear a mask.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's been really fun. They um, we figured that if each kid does five, there's gonna be almost um, you know, over a hundred acts of kindness. So that's really fun. They've been having a lot of fun with that and um, trying to do things throughout the community and see how quickly kindness can spread when we do just a small act. So they've been having a lot of fun with that and they've really rose to that challenge and it's been fun to hear about all their stories. So it's been cool.
Great job.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good thing. I mean, that's a very good theme, the kindness thing, you know, it's no, it's, it just makes so many people's day and one act of kindness leads to another, which just builds and matters. So that's a very good thing.
All right, that's all for my student leaders. I think unless you have anything else for the school board, um, you guys can log off if you want, or you can wait until Caitlin's done talking for student council.
Very, thank you. Okay, high school.
Okay, I've got Caitlin vested all today. Uh, she's a junior in student council and she's just gonna talk about some of the festivities we've had for snow week this week. Um, and then I will say that I just found out today that spring summit is is March fourth for them. So we're gonna start working on planning that so that they can hopefully attend that spring summit in a couple weeks.
Woo, yeah. That'll be fun. Um, so high school is uh, taking snow week on right now. So we've had a whole week of dress up days. And Monday, February fourteenth was Valentine's Day. So you were supposed to wear anything with pink, purple, red, white. And then on Monday as well, student council would be selling uh, Valentine's themed donuts. Uh, moving on to Tuesday, uh, the theme was twinning is winning. So, I mean, it's kind of self-explanatory, but you know, twine someone, twine with more people, whatever. So that was kind of fun. Wednesday is pajama day. So uh, yeah, that was just kind of a comfy day. Thursday is country versus cl- country club. That was kind of fun. So you know, you had the option to do western or if you're more so of a golfer, you know, do all preppy and you know, so that's kind of fun. Um, however, Wednesday and Thursday, we had uh, candy grams being sold. So that means we had uh, tables out, I think, uh, maybe in the morning, were they in the morning? I don't know. I helped. Okay, so just, just during lunch then, okay. So we had them sold during lunch. Uh, you had an option of different flavors of suckers. Um, and you could send them to anybody you wanted with a little note attached to the sucker. So that was kind of fun. Um, and then they'd be delivered. So uh, and then finally Friday was Greyhound gear. So that'll be tomorrow if we have school. Oh, oh, one more thing. Um, we were, we were trying to have a dance, but we didn't have one this year. Otherwise, that's probably the only change this year. So.
Okay, well, sounds like a, sounds like a fun week. Very good.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay.
You can log off. You too, Caitlin.
Okay, five point three, Angie.
Okay, as most who know, I'm in the machine, in charge of our American Indian Ed program. And I'm gonna just kind of run through these things pretty quickly. Um, those who of you who know me, I can talk for a very long time, but I'm gonna be brief and keep it within ten fifteen minutes. So I gave you a lot to look at. So if later you have questions about anything that this program entails, you could come and talk to me. We could visit if you have ideas. I'm very open-minded. Um, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about what is going on currently with our program. So the first item I'm going to be looking at.
Very good.
That's right. Yep, you can be, you can be the way.
Nope, you're good. Sorry about that.
No, that's right. The first um, thing I'm gonna be going through is the one, the little packet entitled American Indian Ed program. Update for our school year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and through this program, there's a lot to do with it and our numbers have grown from the first year I did this, I had about twenty students kindergarten through twelfth grade. And now throughout this school year, pre-K through twelfth grade, I've had a total of ninety-two students in and out. Not all at the same time through this layer. Some would transfer into our district and some out. So it has become a very busy, wonderful program to be part of. And some of those things that this program encourages would be outreach. That would be to uh, what I would consider like my families and our parents of our Indian Ed program, as well as the students, trying to communicate with them either in person or digitally. This year, virtual is our um, last year and this year, that's been a big part of communicating with our students as well. Something I've done a little bit more in the last two years is trying to connect with them on our Google meets so that they have a little bit of academic support when they're home, either through quarantine or for other reasons that we have known about. I also try and communicate as much as I can with our teachers from both buildings to meet the needs of the students in their rooms or in their grade level that I can help either support through academics. And our program really focuses on reading and math, trying to find the gap and butt in with some extra supports. Students who already get supports in school um, are already getting that support and others are doing very well. So I try and meet those kids in the middle who don't really qualify for the extra special help. However, um, they're not quite getting by in school. So that's what I communicate with teachers about to see who needs that the most. Also communicating with our admin to see what would be best for our buildings. Um, other things that this program supports are me attending conferences and meetings. This year is gonna be the first in-person, what they call the MIEA, that's our Minnesota Indian Ed Association, Association um, conference. As of right now, it's still in person, which um, last year they planned on having it in person and then it just canceled it or postponed until this year. So that's something that is very good. It's two, three-day conference that I can get a lot of information, get good feedback to better our program. Um, and this, the funding through our state and federal grants help to send me to these conferences and do different trainings online so that I can best help our students and our families. With that, I talked a little about what the academic support in both buildings. Elementary is scheduled with the teachers based on the need of the students. So I'll communicate in the beginning of the fall saying, here are the students of my program, here this, these are in your room, who would maybe need a little extra help. So then we schedule from there. At high school, I'm up here during their student, or their study hall times and communicating weekly with those students to see who needs to come down, monitoring their grades, seeing who's falling behind with the same sentence, and then contacting their study hall teachers to have them come down. So just a little bit about that. The paperwork and funding for my program is kind of exclusive to probably the only one in the district that is funded completely one hundred percent from state and federal funds. With that, there are a lot of application things, um, a total for both for state and for for our um, federal throughout the year. So I am in charge of those things. Thankfully, Sue can review them and give me some input if there are more things that I should include. But I'm gonna come back to the idea of the paperwork and funding in just a moment. I will be talking about our Indian Ed program plan, which pretty much dictates what I should do with our dollars and what I should do with my time. So when I say the Indian Ed program plan in the paperwork, that is our state funding that kind of details what my program does. But to finish off, kind of a summary of the things that I tried to accomplish or tried to do with our program on the backside of that. Just one, one thing that the state funding Indian Ed program really encourages is a lot of Native American culturally related activities. So we've established having uh, some different before and during school activities. Try with my Scandinavian accent to do some Ojibwe language. Um, with the students, I always come straight out and say it might sound Scandinavian, but I did take a couple Ojibwe language classes to try and do it the best I can. Um, and it's a really important thing for our program because Ojibwe language, which was uh, native to this area, was one of those things that really was taken away from the American Indian people. So it's very important for them to keep their language because it was never always written down. It's just carried on from generation to generation. So something that we tried to do with that, establish some lessons for kindergarten through sixth grade, different ones for those different cultural areas. And we've been able to bring in with our Indian Ed dollars, a lot of Native American presenters, including music, dance, crafts, and opportunities for students to attend college and career fairs. And in the last couple of years, well, a couple of years ago, I started an American Indian Ed family fun night, which then was closed down for a little while. And now this year, we re uh, we redid that. That's gonna be something to look forward to in the future. I just had one of those in January. And I'm hoping that each year that will grow with attendance. So I can meet families and they get into know what our program's about. And they can maybe be part of our parent committee. Um, also, starting next year, and students in the high school are able to sign up for this year, something I'm pretty excited about, is an opportunity to do Ojibwe language courses through uh, Northwest Service Co-op. And they are able to sign up for those for elective credits for graduation. So just a very exciting thing for both my students, which my program funding can support paying for that. And other students have the opportunity to do that. They would just have to fund that themselves. Or throughout the school, figure out if there's some funding for that. Some of the examples of the classroom and the individual lessons and activities that I've been trying to get back into um, doing in the classrooms, which were limited for a while. I've already this year been able to do six different lessons. Um, and you can kind of read through those later, but they include a lot of cultural things and legends of our cul- the culture and just trying to keep those, those things present so that people can be learning about other people and other cultures so that the acceptance of differences are encouraged. Uh, other presenters and guests that I've had include dancers and um, we had a dream catcher activity that came into our school, who he might come back this year. He's already said that he's interested and we're trying to schedule that for the spring. But we've had two different activities. Um, one of which has, is yet to come. Next Friday, we're gonna have an Indigenous Foods Day where a gentleman is gonna come into our building and teach those students how to make meals that are relevant to their culture. And then they get to take home things for their family, make with their family. Another activity we had this year in both buildings was we had a drum group come in. And that was very wonderful for a lot of us who have not experienced those things before. And also we had what they call indigenous games in our fire classes. So in the elementary as well, in the high school, they learn different activities like lacrosse that are indigenous to that culture group. So we can kind of zip through those later and take a look at some of those activities that we've been blessed to have come into our building. Um, and something to look forward to is we're perhaps gonna have somebody who has been in our building before, Ron Wilson. He's gonna maybe be able to come to our seventh grade and eighth grade classes for English and teach kids coping strategies on how to use music and poetry to express themselves and to um, handle stress. So he's on the, in the works for trying to come this year as well. And we're excited that my funding also can support some student development opportunities. Anton Troyer, who works at the Mississippi State University, is gonna come in in the fall and talk to our entire staff about Native American history, culture. And we're also able to get wonderful books for them to use as resources for themselves and for their students from there on. So with that, um, as I had mentioned before, the next huge packet here is our Indian Ed program plan. That really is the guts of what I try to provide for our students and their families, for American Indian and students and their families. Um, it is fifteen pages long. So I will not be going through each point tonight in this meeting. But I would encourage you, if you'd like to read those details, um, they changed uh, setup of this this year, which I believe will actually be better. It just took a lot more time and thought and conferring with different people for ideas to get to the point where we had it approved by the state. And this is what I base my program off of. There are five goal areas, which, like I said, read in more detail later. You can keep this, use it for whatever. You have to read it thoroughly. But I also, for your, um, for, I'm gonna say, the next part of behind that packet, I did a summary of what those goal areas are and what they represent. So it'll be a lot quicker to go through. So this is what, what exactly my focus would be and why I do the activities that were mentioned earlier. For goal area one is to support our, support our post-secondary preparation for American Indian peoples. With that, at the beginning of their senior year and even before, we make sure that those students have enough credits to graduate and they are prepared for what they'd like to do after high school. With that, it's also giving them an opportunity to go to career fairs and college fairs to give them an, uh, an idea of what they'd like to go into, what areas of interest and what schools make sense. Also, another huge part of that is gathering all the um, information that they can apply for scholarships that are, are given to only American Indian Ed students and uh, they can qualify for those based on their enrollment. So to give that information in their hands and offer a chance for them to come into my office and fill that paperwork out for them. One of the um, the most important pieces of information I give them is about a twenty-five page um, document with hyperlinks of all the scholarships they can apply for. So it's a really big deal and it's a lot of information to give them, but it's really crucial. So uh, it will email let's them, mail it to their home and put it in their locker so that they have the opportunity to be prepared for post-secondary education if they are interested. So that's the first part, area one. Area two is to support their academic achievement, which I touched on earlier. Like I said, if they get supportive services, those kiddos are taken care of. And since I have ninety-two students throughout the year that I have to, you know, keep track of, we have that support in place for them. Other students are getting by and doing very well in their classes. So I try and hit those kiddos right in the middle that just need that little bit of extra support. Biggest focus they'd like us to work on, like I said before, was reading and math. So I've scheduled both buildings so that we can try and get that in place for them and get them extra help or qualify for special services if, if that makes sense. Area three is making curriculum and relevant to the needs, interests in the cultural heritage of American Indian peoples. A lot of um, the lessons that I'm able to teach in classes, as well as the materials, I just have it in my rooms available for them to, to read. We're offering um, different things to our teachers to have in their classrooms, as well as both of our media centers. We've had a lot of great, wonderful opportunities through a, a website that I reference a lot called American Indians in Children's Literature. And being able to, to get quality, relevant, cultural curriculum in the hands of both our teachers and our students is a big area that they like to focus on. Something that's a work in progress and learning every year, but just trying to give those opportunities for our school and for my students and families. Goal area five is to provide positive reinforcement of self-image of American Indian peoples. Something I didn't think of before I started this job, is just being represented once again in curriculum or within the building and different activities, even coming into the school and help them feel like their self-image is important and they can see themselves in other people and they can be proud of their heritage and their culture. So that's been a big thing um, that is important to focus on so that those students feel like they are represented and they have a positive self-image of who they are and their culture and where they came from. So that's that area. And goal area five is developing their intercultural awareness among pupils, including staff. Like I mentioned, we have some trainings coming up with the opportunity to just learn and be open-minded and giving opportunities for parents to do that too, coming to different conferences and having an opportunity to join their students at college fairs or career fairs and just giving them a sense of ownership of the program. And also just allowing that awareness amongst all of our students, as well as all of our parents of our district and our staff. It just, I, like I said, I've learned so much even just after the few years that I've done this that I feel like it is one of those things that is just a wonderful opportunity to think of perspective, think of other people, think of differences and, and embrace that. So with that, um, kind of rolling right on high time here. This then is summary of what, if you want more detail, if you want to read this later. But that is what really, um, this program that having this compliance overviewed, that I was gonna otherwise have the Lord approve and the chairperson sign, was also reviewed by our parent committee, our Indian Ed Parent Committee. They reviewed what our program entails and they made a recommendation of compliance. So the chairperson's already signed and said that they are in support of this program and what we're doing. However, I have a great rapport with our, our Indian Ed chairperson and said, if there's anything you can ever think of, I'm very open-minded. So if there are people that give me ideas, I'm really excited to try different things. And if you have ideas as well, that are, the sky's the limit. So the compliance paperwork is for what I've more or less presented here. And if we are in compliance, we can vote on that tonight and perhaps sign. And I already have as well in this same paperwork, the members of what we call our APAC. It's our American Indian Parent Committee. So that, the names of those folks are. All of that is the paperwork that would be otherwise need to go on and have approved. Are there any questions for me? After all the ramblings of all that summary, it is a very detailed program with a lot of suggestions. So it's hard to summarize it quickly, but we have a question or any comments or any concerns?
This sounds very interesting, Angie. This sounds like you've done a very good job with it. Grows really nicely and you know, it's, it's interesting seeing what you have, you know, on you know, your agenda, how the program's going and things. It'll be interesting to see how this goes in the future. It's in a good direction, I know.
Thank you.
I don't know. Where we, where we just started this program, where we are today, I mean, says a lot about passion. Just will see it in the next.
I do. The last years, my numbers have stayed about the same. So um, going from twenty and kind of building up, I see this as maybe or perhaps about the number that I'll stay at, but the sky's the limit for ideas and activities we can have in. So I'm finding that my brain is all over the place trying to think of how I can actually follow through and do these things. So in time, as the funding keeps growing, perhaps I can hire others to keep doing some of the things that I just can't be in every place at every time. So I'm excited about that.
Well, then the presentations you bring in, they benefit. That's, that's a nice thing. One quick question, you know, get support from Whiter's College. One quick question, you get support from White Earth College?
Support in which?
Well, you know, like we have a bunch of high school, you know, basically that there will be programs for them, supporting students here.
The students themselves could attend post-high school, but online as of right now, the only thing I've pursued to have online within the school day has been this language thing through the Northwest Service Corps. White Earth itself, I believe we could possibly navigate that as well, but it would be probably a virtual thing that we'd have to decide if it would fit into the same school day. But yes, after high school, we have a lot of things for our students to come and visit on a book fair day and college information. Unfortunately, those in-person things have not happened the last couple of years, but I'm hoping that can become something that they're able to do, as well as the Leech Lake Tribal College. So, and that's where I took my language courses that I did was through White Earth. And I thought it was really helpful. And like I said, I'm pretty decent staffed again, girl. So if they can help me, I'm pretty sure.
Right.
Yeah. So yes, that's a good, it's a great thing to look into. The one that has fallen in place, there's been this other thing that we worked with in the past. However, that might be an option.
Great job. Pretty good.
Anything else? Otherwise, as well, can you review anything or think of anything? I'm most certainly open to a meeting later discussing more details and we need us to move on, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Angie.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. Item six point oh, the front balance report, super good case.
Well, if you look at the front balance report, you can see it's holding steady. Our expenses were compared to last year, our revenues are, or front balance. We, when you compare us to last year, in most areas, we're a little bit more introduced. Food service is still holding steady, holding strong. We did some of our paid off, some of our debt service payments. So that was a big expense for this past month. If you look at the percentages, you can see we're still tracking in terms of expenses. Just a little bit, except for food service, we're just a little bit under what we budgeted, where we would be. Revenue, some of the general fund revenue, like we've talked about before, we have incurred the expense before we can get it. It's the federal grants. You know, we claim them after we pay the bills. So that's always going to sit just over. Behind our expenses. And then, as we noted last time with our bonds, we have some money to spend and we have advertised for events for the intubating at the elementary. Not yet started planning the playground investment. She needs to sit down and go and get this to the Peters to get some better input. But by and large, we're tracking where we expected to be with our expenses and our net worth. Any questions? Just like previous years, we will undoubtedly have some budget commissions. Free archery, all again. There's like the seed that we do this, with our contract, you know, we have the water route that we contracted out. We do have some significant expenses with that. We did budget for it under as there. Any questions?
So, great, item six point two in finance, accept donation of $400 from the speech trophy with thanks. It's not explained, very kindly, very generously made explanation for the speech club. Anyone have any comments or anything? I don't know, promotion and acceptance, but thanks.
Motion from some donation with thanks.
Second. What was? Okay, so a motion from Director Marcus, seconded by Director Mackey, to accept a donation of $400 from the Boston Order for Speech Trophies with thanks. Anybody have any questions, comments? All right, we'll go to a vote then. All those in favor to accept it? Any one opposed? Motion carries. Item six point three, accept donation of $100 from Millie Ballston. Millie Ballston. For an FFA program with thanks. So as I understand, this came from, from, sorry, terrible themes. Nancy Ballston from, Millie Ballston. So anyone that need, very kind of people, very many donated to the FFA programs. So I'll look for a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept it with thanks.
A motion from Director Mackey, seconded by Director Marcus, to accept the donation of $100 from Millie Ballston for that FFA program with thanks. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six point four, adopt MSBA resolution regarding federal funding for IDEA services. Do you want to, any comments?
Yes, this is something that we'll go to our federal, which we talked before about IDEA and how there was a promise when it was enacted to provide 47% of funding and how the federal government has to adopt this act. MSBA has asked districts to adopt this resolution in order to show our support for the federal government taking on that whole system. And imagine if the federal government picked up their portion of it and the state, and the state picked up their portion, imagine what we could do with it. So I'm asking that we adopt this resolution.
So this is the cause subsidy that we're talking about?
This is dealing with the cross subsidy at federal level.
At the federal level. There's discussion down in the state and on this too.
There is discussion down in the state. There is a House bill that has been introduced. And at this point, there's no companion bill in the Senate, but I'm hearing it's a minimal traction.
So is there any other questions? Okay, in that case, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion to approve, just had the wording all done.
Actually, it could probably be a better.
Yeah. Approve the support of the resolution.
So a motion by Director Kristen, seconded by Director Mutter, to adopt the MSBA resolution regarding federal funding for IDEA services. Any questions, comments? I'll agree with you on the vote then. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, it was all the reports on the table, Mr. Bushy at the floor.
I have the number one, you can see our enrollment stayed the same as in January. And I anticipate that will stay consistent for the remainder of the year. Any questions on enrollment? See it there, yeah. Item number two, parent-teacher conferences were held on February 9th. And our participation percentage was 97%. Again, that was virtual and phone conferences. Typically, we're around 94, 95%. And throughout the years that I've been in tenure here, and so, yeah, it's been well received with the, considering the pandemic, that we do virtual or phone and the communication connections with the family system have been huge. So it's been very good. Item number three, we had our 100-day celebration on February night and was dressed like it's 100 degrees. Probably was 50 below. I can't remember exactly what it was on the 9th, but, so we celebrated the 100-day. I know I was in the kindergarten room and Mrs. Carlin's room. And they were doing some activities that involved doing things 100 times, like blinking your eyes 100 times. Obviously, Mrs. Carlin didn't have them do that for 100 times, but I participated and then we had to touch our toes and we went up to 50. And I'm telling you this because I couldn't walk the next two days. And so it was celebrated differently in each classroom. They had a bunch of activities celebrated in the house today. So it was a fun day, great activities throughout the school. Item number four, band mini concerts were held February 4th and 7th. Like to thank Mr. Peltier and Mrs. Katie for their work on it. It was a great performance. Again, we ran mini concerts like we did with the choir and then it was well-received. The sixth-grade band sounded tremendous. I'm very proud of our students and very thankful to our instructors. Item number five, I won't go through this because I know this Amanda went through it with student leaders over this finishing up Kindness Week. Again, a lot of activities, a lot of different certain dress-up days. And our student leaders have really stepped up and also with that, with anything when you run it like this, there's interruptions throughout the day. But it's all for the right reason. And we had a lot of great things that transpired throughout the week. And so I thank the student leaders, like to thank the students at the Almond St. Elementary School staff because like I said, it can be disruptive sometimes. But what we get out of it, it's well worth it. It's been a great week. Item number six, book fair, we're just about there. It's March 14th through the 18th. I did attach the info there on the book fair. So that'll take place that week. We also have a Title I event. We used to call it Luffins for Mom and Dawn, it's for Dad. This year, it's going to be Breakfast Bites. And this is open through pre-8 through 6. Or we limited it first through 3rd, but that'll go hand-in-hand with our book fair week, our Title I event. And like I said, it's scheduled for March 14th. And there is a schedule that is attached that if you have any questions on that, please let me know. Various activities throughout the week, various classrooms visiting, book fair through the day. Book fair will be open in the evenings too, which is great for our families to come in. So we get back to normal activities, which is going to be good. Item, I don't count very good, that's number seven. And actually, I scribbled it, it's not February 14th, it's March 14th, it's not Breakfast Bites. But item number seven is our students of month for January in kindergarten, Hadley, Padley, Lapierre, C. Clark, first grade, Mary Williams, Ivor Sorgard, second grade, Aurora, Lawlman, Kylie Erickson, grade three, Chase Manicky, Emma Peltier, Christian Bachem, in fourth grade, Caitlin Crozier in fourth grade, Colby Sueno and Ian Simonson in grade five, and Ellis Weiner and Abby Quam, and Jericho Tom in grade six. We are, one thing I didn't mention here, we sent out our MCA testing schedule. Again, that will be happening, I'll have more on that in March, but we start that at the beginning of April. So we're on the backside of things and things are just rolling right now. Which has been very good, very good. We weathered the COVID stretch that we had and we are back to full strength. Our attendance list went from a page and a quarter to about a quarter of a page right now. So kids are back in the building, staff is healthy, knock on wood. I'll pray on that and hopefully we can finish the year.
Sounds good.
I wasn't here for the beginning, but it's okay. I present some information. Okay, as you know, from the beginning of the year, we knew we would have a larger number in kindergarten. As we're getting closer to the start of the year, we're going to increase in enrollment in kindergarten. Instead of shifting at that time, because we did have discussions of looking at a third section at that time, we felt like it was in our best interest at the time to keep it two sections. Obviously, we have two full-time pairs in the classrooms, which have been very beneficial. Now that we transitioned, we're almost three-quarters through the year and our teachers have done a tremendous job and our pairs have done a tremendous job. And we are getting the most of what we can. But now looking at next year and the improactive with our education of our students and having conversations with our kindergarten teachers, that is a very large number. And I asked for some feedback and I've had conversations throughout the year with both Mrs. Helber and Mrs. Carlin. Some of the things, and just dropping some things down from the start to where we're at now, we are noticing gaps in ability, which makes it very difficult when you're in two sections for a teacher to address those gaps because of the large number. So that's one thing to keep in mind. The other thing is that last, we go back to last year, a lot of our kiddos, not a lot, I mean, there were some that didn't participate in our preschool because of the pandemic. So they're coming in newbies. So that's been an issue or a struggle for some of our students. And then as the year has gone on or once we started the year, we are definitely seeing some students that have some special needs that we need to, we're trying to address now or we need to address in the future. Again, going back to the pandemic and dealing with a large amount of kids is the mental health of our kids. And how can a teacher with 28 and 26 kids address each issue? And it's very difficult. Obviously, it's easier when you ask smaller numbers. Everything too is, well, one of the things is the advantages. And so everything I just talked about, the advantages of moving to a third section for next year will help support, added the support that is needed for our whole student, not just academically, emotionally, mentally, everything. So with that, I mean, there's many advantages to smaller class size, especially in the primary grades. So with that, part of this presentation, giving you guys the information is to set up our kids and our staff to be successful. And that would be going, adding a third section for first grade. And I know it comes up later in the agenda, but it's definitely, I strongly recommend that we look at a third section for first grade next year. And if that is the route that we go, and I hope that it is, then we would loop that teacher at least through grade two. So this won't be one year, I'd be looking at something for something more than one year, obviously. And if numbers, whether they could go up, and then we still have that issue. But there is always a possibility of we get a reduction in numbers and it's manageable, but still key and crucial at that primary grade level that we strongly consider. And I highly recommend a third section. And I can answer any questions that you guys may have right now.
So right now, according to what I have from what we're looking at here, we're just looking at first grade section, 22, 23. We're just adding that section and later the posting looks on. Like you said, you're looking at possible days. Probably very good chance that this would carry over for, at least through grade two. So then we address that.
We would, at the end of the first year, the end of the eighth grade year, Principal Bushy will come back with another request to continue the third section of that grade level. And then the recommendation to move that teacher with those kids. There's a lot of, a lot of good things that happen when you move kids with a teacher. In terms of relationship building, in terms of, you know, understanding what academics we are and how to go forward. So it would be a teacher moving with the kids and then at the end of their second grade year, then again, Mr. Bushy and the board will be evaluating. You know, those first few years, pre-k, kindergarten, first and second grade, they're on the same stage for everything else. And oftentimes after that, you can maybe go a little bit further, that's the. you'll have to evaluate it at the end of second grade just to see that they are.
It shouldn't be an issue that they're in a position like that where it's kind of like year to year basis.
Well, I, whatever, I mean, the person, if we move forward, I mean, as I said, a person retired in that position, I mean, it's, it's gonna dislike what we're talking about. It's a year to year recommendation. And you can throw out numbers all we want, but I, I would hope that we would base it, base it on need.
It would be best. I agree with you there, but I mean, I just, you know, I look at it, you know, a young teacher or something. Are you gonna struggle to pull that position? Really, you're telling them it's a good possibility to be several years. You can only tell you
One year, yeah, just be honest with the applicants and whoever replies. I feel confident though that we they would be, the information would be known upfront and honest with them based on, based on where we're at.
If you're struggling, maybe you can address that. Would this be, this would be budgeted, correct?
This would be S R funded.
It would be S R funded.
That's what we said we do with S R. It's written. And I think we're gonna be able to realign some funding. We're, we're getting some funding from other sources as well that are gonna pick up some of the same things that S R does. And S R carries over, other sources don't. So we're gonna use up those other sources and have a who carries over even the whole budget this year for our S R three dollars.
I got a granddaughter that's starting at that age group right now, so I so I'll make a motion to approve uh the addition of the third section for first grade for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, as actually something through the back open and do it now.
Oh, I thought we had moved that up on the agenda.
Well, this discussion we did, but that's, that's fine, that's fine. We, we decided we can do it now. Let's see if we find it here, here this, here this, here this. And what's the step? Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Director Marcus, supported by Director Marcus to approve the addition of a third section at first grade for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Any questions, discussion? All right, then we'll vote them. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, seven point two, high school principals.
Principal Crump made a recording um because there are some exciting things happening in the high school and I wanted you to hear them about them, Crump said. So we go.
Good evening. This is Donna Crump, Boston High School principal with the February Board of Report. On February ninth, we had parent teacher conferences. They were student-led, they were virtual. We had sixty percent attendance. Uh we'll be following up with our students and their competitors. To see um which areas we can maybe improve a little bit of that attendance. We're gonna do that this Friday, but due to the U. Learning Day, we'll have to do that next week. Parent teacher conferences, like I said, we're sixty percent attendance. We're gathering student and parent and teacher feedback to see what we can do to improve our practice for next year. Item number two on the report is our triple A award winners. Congratulations to Joshua Manneke and Ash Jipolt and their families for all their hard work and effort. Triple A award winners are seniors who excel in fine arts, have a three point O G P A or higher and have contributed to sports and athletics. Item number three, a five hundred dollar Boston Education Foundation grant was awarded to Myla Donovan uh for her natural resources course and Wilderness Survival Unit. Students will be using compasses, topographic maps and other orienting supplies again for Wilderness Survival. Congratulations to Myla and the students in the natural resources course. Item number four is uh some of our course updates for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. First one is personal finance and economics. Our juniors typically take this course. It will be offered by our instructor joining to in our business department and it will increase a little bit of the personal finance aspect of our economics course. So students will be ready for life after high school. Again, our monthly media design course is going to be offered by Mike Ostadell, instructed by Mike Ostadell. Students will be learning to manage our school website, do some web design along with taking pictures for our school yearbook and other multimedia pieces like doing videos and things like that too. An increase in the class time for band and choir, increase in the same time um to get ready for competitions. And also a junior high general music expansion will be, you know, on the course docket for next year. STEM courses uh will have increased one STEM course for uh grades nine through twelve. Students will be doing some project lead the way robotics along with using our CNC machine and our three D printer to design items. And uh learning to do some coding and fly our drones. Congratulations to those students and a big thank you to Old Bank for the twenty-five thousand dollar technology grant to Foster High School that allow those materials and courses to be possible. Uh one other update that we'll be doing for the two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three school year. Our computer courses will get a little bit of a twenty-first century refresh. Uh on top of teaching students skills to use programs like Excel, PowerPoint and Word. We'll also be doing some coding uh to allow for students that would be interested in doing computer technology careers that involve coding. Lastly, is our enrollment. We had three students who moved out of the district this month. But we had one join and one is in the process of joining. So we are down slightly on enrollment, but looking to pick those numbers back up. Thank you and have a good evening.
So as you can, as you heard, we have a lot of things in the works for um for, for the high school. Course changes and things um having Mrs. Student teach the economics course means that we can pick up some CTE dollars for that. We're ready to work to get, so that we can capture, hopefully capture some CPE dollars from persons like Austin. I was gonna teach Ian Ryan went over to William Bank yesterday to see if they're doing something like this. Um and it sounds like it's a good meeting, but they're folks and they're, he's ready to, ready to take off with us. And then expanding some music offerings and, and a little bit more times the band and choir. I think we benefit that program. So we're and then having kids learn how to fly the drones. That's uh more big steps along our, our strategic journey. So we're excited. Any questions about Mr. Crump to report? You can see he did provide it for any of his mom.
Ask him a question just so he might answer.
It just seems to give them a lot of fun to have at the rise of a school and it sounds very interesting.
Yeah, and opportunities kids have are.
It's looking really good. All right, nothing else. Then Superintendent Chase, go ahead.
I know that some of you had received some communication about the Minnesota Student Survey. You could wrap that up this week. Families were informed. We did send out emails and writing things and I know, I know Principal Bushy said the day before we ran the, the surveys. The link to the surveys, the families can see the questions was provided. We also provided information about how we as a district use the, the data, but that families could understand that it does impact here for us. Um and then families were given an opportunity to help their children out. We did have some, some families that took advantage of that opportunity. Um at home, so it's not a lot, but some did. And because we've gotten more early, we should have a stat that we have this year for our, our district. We can have a table. Okay, how does it compare to what we saw three years ago?
Is there still a link?
Um, yeah.
Could you send it?
Mm-hmm.
The one I got, I think several years. See if that doesn't make up. So.
Yeah.
Um, just one other thing and that's to just sign clear. So electronic emails, that's how we're sending to parents. Was there a written letter or anything?
Yeah, it didn't, I buy out receipts out, I buy out the emails and then I think elementary they might have sent. We find for high school anyway, the email system seems to work better.
Yeah, that's just be able to be clear when questions come again.
Yeah, and students can choose not to answer certain questions too.
Also, there is, you don't have to answer.
No, we don't have to answer all the questions. If they don't, if there's a question they don't understand or they don't feel comfortable doing, they can just skip it. It's not like, it's not like MCA best or those kinds of things. It's just um, we're working uh already on some summer school things. Um last year we got summer preschool funding. Um we got forty-eight thousand. We didn't, we spent about twelve with that. And we were allowed to carry it forward and with the caveat that we have to serve at least two kids for a hundred hours this year to, to get the rest of the money off of the parents. We plan to do that. We'll be actually probably serving ten and we'll be inviting families as we did last year, families that maybe didn't get to participate or kids who were quarantined or kids that we will give an extra for that preschool program. Um and then we also, last year we received uh some summer funding for both the high school and the elementary to expand our summer offerings. I mean, it's designed to pay for staff. Last year's was based on student count. So we had to kind of guess how many we would serve for how many hours. Um and then we got like a quarter of what they projected and most, like most schools, we overestimated a little bit. Um but this, this year it's based on what we submit. So we're going to go through and really pleasure on our program and, and I imagine that we I'm imagining that we're going to get fully funded for our summer program so that we can once again do the set of the paint grid program like we did last year and then expand some of the elementary programs. As I said in one of my emails, um I had been working on crisis plan and reification at my office this, this, at this point. Uh last week I met with the ministerial because our church, we have several large churches that would be good spots to do some, well, to evacuate to if we can't use our buildings and to use as reification sites once we have to do that evacuation. And we also talked about how the ministerial would be involved in helping provide support to our children and our families if we have such crises where they're reunitifying our buildings or one of theirs. And we've got established a good communication plan. And in the next few weeks, I'll be visiting their individual sites and maybe they'll bring me. We have a market crisis program. COVID response team met yesterday. Uh we, as of yesterday, had no one in quarantine for COVID. That never has, has, has dropped over the last two weeks. The team talked about can we adopt the CDC guidelines for students as well as staff and they were supportive of that. That the now viewed applies a five day quarantine for students. Um with the idea that we're gonna start looking towards eliminating quarantine for anyone that's not sick. You know, eventually that's where we need to get, but we're gonna, we're taking steps, phases and then we'll do the, it'll be a five day quarantine. We come back. Today's six through ten, that's what we're doing with the staff. We did, did a test run with a couple of students last week. The two or three that we had out of quarantine usually last week were five. There are any complaints that we didn't get. As you can see, we didn't have any official cases. And we also felt that we could recommend um not requiring masks for visitors to our building any longer. And people have been fine, I'm fine with it, but you know, at this point. Especially when we're having games and everybody is unmasked and making it to seats.
He tells us that the other side of it, we're gonna require after five days of a house and explore our mask too.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna try and follow the CDC guidelines, but I think our, you know, the question came up and can we start, can we start doing this? Like we would for six day home if you're not. That's next. So we need to get there. Um next week we have a meeting scheduled with the city of Boston and the board officers. Um the city, a few years ago, submitted a state broader school grant and, and that was awarded. And part of that included, they got some extra money to do. Part of that included between this parking lot that the high school officer, the, by the district office and civic center. So next week, just to see what they have in mind and we'll go from there. And the next student cabinet meeting is set for next week. Um our topic this time will be student well, just like we've talked about. What are they seeing? What are they hearing? What do they need? What are the recommendations for this overall student well need? I hope this end will help. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Chase. All right, moving on then. Item, such an eight point O personnel, approve or not approve a principal's contract. Okay, so those of us who are on the negotiating team, well, this was a little longer process. A lot of thought went into it. It's one of those cases where we knew where we wanted to go, but we had a lot of discussion on how to get there. And arriving here, I think they have a very good contract put in place for them. Both parties were satisfied with this. So without Ed recommend approval, it's, it's a good piece of work. So anybody have any questions regarding it? Hello? I think we'll be looking for a motion to approve the principal's contract for year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three. Okay, so the motion that Director Marcus, directed by Director Manneke is support to approve the principal's contract for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. Does anybody have any English? Okay, we'll vote them. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item eight point two, approve, not approve, final two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two license status seniority list. I understand there's just a little bit of lighter feeling to it since the last time we looked at it.
The seniority list, there are changes to it.
It just, we had to update it based on, that's it.
Okay.
There was a date yet and it was my error actually. That I adopted, somebody said I did, updated it. But there was no other than that, there's none of the changes.
Okay. So this will be essentially been the same list we looked at earlier. Anyone who need questions, come. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve or not approve the seniority books. So I have a motion by Director Marcus, directed by Director Marcus to approve the final two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two license status seniority list. There's no questions, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Item eight point three, discussion superintendent position. As we all know, super energy is to be, we'll be under a real assignment at the end of the school year. We thank her for all she's done for us. We look forward to working with her for the rest of the school year. And also to move forward and how we're gonna go about searching for someone to build the reins when she goes on. Now, last time we did this, we went through MSPA. No, get a list out with them, you know, the, the mirror post on their listing. They gave us a list of, you know, possible candidates. You know, it's, it went quite well. Director, where you were more actually more involved at that point was because you lined them up at that.
I think it was mostly board approval and then once we had it, then it was very close to Tina and I mean, you know, that's one thing about the superintendent's job search and hiring, it is a whole larger job. A person, a committee here.
You know, walk us through the process and stuff.
So if you recall the last time, we did this with the MSBA, we got a list of candidates, narrowed it down for you on the interview. Then we set up interview teams with board members, FEA staff, community, superintendent Chase, you'll be part of this, we'd like you to be. But anyway, then we, you know, we interviewed the candidates, narrowed things down, you know, we're going to wait the second interview. Then went on to their, for our action, you know, and final step. So it's more or less just an overview of what we did last time.
I think the thing, permission to speak. Sorry, Matt. Um, I think the thing to look at, I mean, MSBA offers different programs or different packages for this process. Um, you know, getting them involved early on this, we need to look at, from the whole board's side of things is how are we going to fill that position? And I have to ask discussion on that whether it is, you know, are we looking at a full-time superintendent? Are we looking at a part-time superintendent? Are we looking at interim? You know, how are we going to go forward this? I know the first part, you know, if we do get MSBA involved, you know, we can have this discussion with ourselves too. But they kind of help talk you through that. I realize, you know, majority of the board now has not been through this process. And I'm sure there's plenty of questions in there. So it's, we need to get moving on this, we're behind the curve already on it. But the other side of it is, is we don't want options.
So anyway, I did speak to Chairman Dupont, he had a discussion on it. His idea, what he'd like to see us do anyway is, you know, get MSBA involved, get a list of what, you know, what, what do they have to offer? Choose how much we want them involved, you know, because they have several packages they can create for their expedition. And then kind of move on from there, you know, as to how we're going to go about it. But like, like Director Veresin and Chairman Dupont was saying too, the sooner we can get going on this, the better. We'll get a better, you get a bigger list of candidates, you get a better qualified list of candidates. So.
How, how does that work? We just reach out to the MSBA and they would send us different options?
Tina, you better, so I mean, you like, I mean, have you, has anybody talked to MSBA?
I think, did we talk to them?
I don't think, I think maybe you did reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, and he was waiting for that. I think from there, from he gets back. He said, I feel, yes, we can give you, I can ask sort of. And then they, um, they'll come out present. So we'll have to have some leads there in the near future. I think the first, what, what Dean had said is the person that is, is kind of overall in charge of that, I think it's Barbara Dorn. She is going to be open until next week. I think she's on vacation as well. I think if the board approves engaging them, then we could get, as soon as she gets back for vacation, we could start following. It's kind of what I, what Dean had said to.
Question. Yes, can you guys have your thoughts? I mean, I, I, but the thing that's fighting me and the crowd over there is kind of sitting with it is, you know, in MSBA, we could, for one package, and I got to hold my hair and go with that. First part of it is, is, you know, we tend to do it remotely or we can help come up with it too. We really do decide how would we do that position? And then kind of have that as each director, have some type of thoughts on that before we sit down. I mean, they're going to take and run some numbers for you, tell you, you know, from your district, this is where, and then Superintendent Chase has been able to tell us, you know, what the job is, you know, like tips and stuff like that. But, you know, they're going to want to, after that initial meeting, start getting the timeline together. And it's, it's a rapid thing once it's going. I mean, we, I don't think we should waste, we can't meet for another week with them. Still think thought process should be, probably go to that, what are we, interim, what are we, part-time, you know, at least. You know, we're a small district, we're right at that cusp of the number of students and stuff like that, where, you know, much bigger, it is not a choice, it's full-time. But, you know, the other side of it is, is, you know, we've heard this from the principals when we sat with them a time, so there's been other staff. COVID's taken a lot out of them, it's added a lot of work to them. So can they pick up some? The pictures, you know, everybody with the part. The other thing about it is, is relate to the, I don't know what that group of candidates looks like right now. Kind of snooped around, go and see what's out there, just from other positions and things like that. You know, it's possible, why not find perfect fit? So then they have to be thinking it. And that's a task at hand because we're also looking at a landing, operating landing. So I mean, it's just, all this is food for nothing. Working forward, I mean, I agree with MSBA involved as soon as we can.
So it makes sense to engage MSBA and get on their schedule or understand what their schedule looks like, come next week, from the person's back. But then internally, I mean, we've got a couple of days to think about how we want to approach it and then come together, have a, have a meeting.
So it's made to be on a work session. So here, it's, Chairman Dupont is back. It'd be nice if he is here, put together a work session.
Until next week.
Oh, is he? Okay, so maybe we just have to go ahead and, go ahead and have a work session? Because I mean, we can discuss it with them when we get back.
I don't think we want to do a work session without, there's been, hopefully have the opportunity to be there with that.
Right, so this is a normal board deal, so.
Great. We need to help. We could do something like that, but I, I think the thing about it is, is take time from each, we just talked, you're going to get people, you know, outside, people, talk to other people, just kind of start getting a feel for, you know, because this involves everybody. I mean, it involves all of our stakeholders, staff, just everybody. So to do this, we will be very transparent about it and thorough.
All right, so if I'm understanding correctly, then if being here in the room, then is that we get MSBA involved each week, then yeah? And then be thinking about what we're looking for, so we have something to settle down with them with when they get here.
Okay, so great thought with it because they're going to run through the pros and cons of each one.
Sure. Any more we have to discuss? Unless, are we ready to move on to the next, next stage? All right, so in the case of long on the item eight point four, motion to engage MSBA to conduct superintendent's search.
Motion approved.
So I have a motion by Director Kristen seconded by Director Marcus to engage MSBA to conduct superintendent's search. Any questions, comments, would we vote? Are we going to vote then? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Who's going to reach out to MSBA initially? I'm going to Tina to start this process, so we can help them.
We can do it. Looking at that in our office, we can reach out, I'm seeing.
Can we just mention to my, you know, that it's still a little ways out, but maybe get me to come back in to that would be, because he already understands the history. Plus I believe.
All right, so moving on then, education, we took care of nine point one and nine point two, so moving on to nine point three, be to approve the resolution of concurrence for the American Indian Education Program Plan. And she just finished explaining that, does anyone have any questions regarding that? All right, then I'll be looking for a motion to approve or not approve.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Director Kristen seconded by Director Lucas to approve the resolution of concurrence for the American Indian Education Program Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ten point O operational, accept bid from Nailers electric to install walk-in cooler freezer fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-one. Explain more, Superintendent Chase.
Yes, and I think Neil Heidi's on as well, so he'll chime in. Neil, if, this is part of our LTFM plan to replace that cooler that is at the high school. Um, we stopped two bids. Um, we got our first one from Nailers and you can see it's fifty-five thousand eight eighty-one. Um, their bid included electrical and some additional higher grade metal, like some stores and halls. We also got a bid from Tweetin. Um, Tweetin put in, um, the elementary cooler and freezer as part of the construction project. Um, theirs did not include electrical, we would have to contract that up locally. Um, and, and the quality of the metal for the doors and things was not quite as, as good as what Nailers' bid included. The other piece of it is that, um, we haven't been really well satisfied with Tweetin's product, what they install and how they service it. Their service hasn't been, um, hasn't been stellar. And, um, when we had work done by Nailers, they're here, they're right on the spot, they, they get things done, they get them done right, they get them done quickly. They're, they've been very good to work with when we needed service. So I talked with Neil and, uh, even though the bid is a little bit higher, he recommended that we go with Nailers and that's my recommendation as well.
So timeline of this, I mean, how are we?
Um, we would start work on it after, in the summer, after school was out and it would be done. Um, we're hoping it's done before July one.
Yeah, I have a little question for you, for Neil. Neil, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Did you anticipate any issues with replacing, you know, we ran into some stuff at the elementary school, will we replace that walk-in?
No, I, um, I've had Luke from Nailers here several times and we've thoroughly went through this project and I think we've got everything lined up that they will do a complete installation. And I'm always very satisfied with the work that we get from Nailers. So I, I don't see us running into any problems. It should go really smooth. It's just that the lead time right now on these walk-in freezers and coolers can take up to four months. And we hope to get it done early in the summer. So that's why we're really trying to get the okay on this and it's part of our LTFM's, we can make sure the product arrives and we accomplish and complete this, this summer.
That's nice. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
All right, so I'll be looking for a motion to accept the bid from Nailers electric to install the walk-in cooler freezer. So I have a motion from Director Montres seconded by Director Maniki to accept the bid from Nailers electric to install walk-in cooler freezer of fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, we're going to vote on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item ten point two, accept or not accept bids on two thousand one international eighth four passenger school bus. N number one HBBJAAAN zero two eight nine one seven five three four. Superintendent Chase, do you have a list of bids?
I think there are two. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Um, we had, uh, you can see the range of bids, the high bid being two thousand eight hundred twenty dollars from Stanley Sky. See the rest of the bids. And we're, of course, recommending that we take the highest bid. This is that Black Lives Over activities bus. Not busy.
Any questions? Is Henry?
Okay, is he serious about, I mean, we know for sure he's going to take it at that bid, right? I just wonder if he had, he got a pretty good second offer too, in case he's, versus helping him back.
I, I think we'll give him a certain amount of time to come in and complete the stand.
Okay.
He doesn't want the next bid.
Do you want a motion to be able to group down that separate bid? So we only have to go back and then.
That would be great planning.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to accept the highest bid on the two thousand one international eighth first passenger school bus and if the deal does not go through to accept the next bid, that's bid down on the bus as a backup in case we need it. So do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
So I have a motion by Director Montres seconded by Director Marcus to accept the highest bid on the two thousand one international eighth first passenger school bus. And if the deal falls through to accept the next highest bid to complete the transaction. Any questions? Comments? All of, vote to vote then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item ten point three, adopt language change and reverse the public comment at board meetings. Which is speaking. This is something we did look at before. We just kind of pushed it back.
Yeah, the policy committee's been meeting and working hard on revising. And as you can see, um, the, the recommendation is to, this is, this is the enactment of the policy, so it's like a state handbook, so that's our, it's more immediately. Um, so it would keep the comments focused on what's on the agenda. It would encourage, but not require people to sign up in the, in the office ahead of time. Um, limiting each person to three minutes and having the total comment period be more than twenty minutes. And then some further language here, but then it would also eliminate the, the comments at the end, comments at the end of the meeting. So everything happens upfront and it also gives board time, the ability to conduct the meeting.
Any questions? Okay, so we're looking for a motion to adopt the language change in regards to the public comment at board meetings. Motion to approve. So a motion by Director Kristen seconded by Director Montres to adopt language change in regards to public comment at board meetings. Any other questions? Vote to vote then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. In force, transportation committee met, Director Maniki really can give some feedback.
Um, so a transportation committee met last night. Um, purpose of meeting last night was to bring in, um, Jerry Stein, the warehouse picking up one route for the district, um, has been out here. Um, just wanted to have some input from him. Um, we also tried to get the G bus signs, but they're very, uh, or the way it is right now, so. Um, so Jerry brought his, uh, wife and daughter, who are all part of the business, uh, wanted to discuss some items with them. Um, I guess first and foremost was the, just whether he would be willing to pick up or continue the route he's doing or pick up any additional routes. Um, and then also the discussion was involving, uh, if, I guess, uh, if we were to contract with him entirely. So that's a couple of items that we discussed. Um, discussing with Jerry, it sounded like, uh, he would be willing to do two routes next year. Sounded like he had a drive. Sounded like he had a driver for that second route. Um. Getting a bus would be the. The issue right now, but it's not going to be willing to, to do that. Um. Cost wise, okay, a fifty percent increase in cost. Next year. Um, with fuel, um, he's gaining wages, uh, sounds like RLC, um, just up all their bus pay. They paid, um, they leave, might be doing the same. So he's just trying to keep up with paying. And then all the increases in parts and gas and all that. Um, so per route be seventy to forty two, um, next year. And then a three, three dollar, three dollars for every mile. So. Kind of discussed as a committee, um, pros and cons of doing two routes with them. Um, also the problem, pros and cons of. Contracting out with them entirely, which he does a lot, clever comics, uh, school district, um. Transportation for them. Um, I think in the discussion with Crystal Maps, I think, uh, kind of came to the conclusion that we would like to try a hybrid model. So we pick up the two routes, we keep the drivers we have. Um, maintain our buses. Um, with that, obviously there's a discussion of what we're gonna do. To start replacing some of our drivers as they start phasing out. Um. And kind of came up with a recommendation that, um, besides being a hybrid model, that we want to, um. Offer three positions that would all be. Full-time positions along with driving bus. First being a mechanic position. That would also drive. Standalone position. Secondly, would be, um, hire a transportation director. We also drive. We discussed keeping that route a little bit shorter. And then third was the, um, driver would also be a custodial float. That driver would be responsible, uh, or the custodial party taking care of our old buses. Uh, there's been some discussion about. Keeping the. Keeping them clean inside, um, outside's clean. Um, so they'd all be, um, offered in like a position slash driver, um. Probably be offered. Um, and then with that, we'd like to see a wash bay. Installed at the bus garages so we could actually, um, keep the outside of the buses better maintained and clean. So. Um. That's the recommendations of the transportation committee. Um. I guess we had a lot of discussion on, you know. Why we did or did not want to solely contract up. With, uh. Here buses. I think, kind of figured what kind of held us back is we lose complete control over everything. So if he comes back next year and says that there's a thirty percent increase. What do you do? We monitor a lot of bus because he wants to, it would be, uh, you, we contract with him. He wants to buy everything, yeah. So. Uh. That's where we kind of hesitated that we lose complete control without at least trying some of these other options to try. Again, some younger, some younger drivers. He talked, he talked about some, Jerry talked about some success he's had with. He's got young moms that drive for him. Howler's been great and they can bring their kids on the bus and. So he gets my ideas when it comes to that. That we could try, but we thought, uh. Doing these positions that were full-time positions versus trying to get someone to sign up to do a morning route. And then possibly have to come in for weather related and transport out and then come back in the afternoon, a few hours. So I think that's kind of, you guys can fill, fill in, I missed anything, but, um, it's kind of where we were standing.
What's the timeline as far as getting back up, Jerry?
Um, he said like two months ago.
Yeah.
And that's because, um, he's short one bus right now. And buses are twelve to eighteen months old right now. And finding a used bus is impossible. So we really want to know if I.
He wants to use his own equipment, still he proposes to.
He did ask.
Yeah, he asked it. We would consider selling.
We did. We had one. Do you think, would you? When you're thinking about adding those three positions, full-time positions. Do you think existing drivers would fill those and would still be short? Three drivers? Okay, just to stay tired.
Yeah, I, I think we're trying to, I mean, our idea behind it would be try to fill it with. New people because, um. Age of our driver pool is. You know where they're probably gonna want to start getting out of drive your buses, so. Um. So that would be my, at least my thought behind it is trying to get some. New people. And then paying for, I think we all agree that we need to pay for the train. Amount of time that goes into it.
Well, that's just.
Uh, it's, it's, the state isn't making it easier. So, um. Um.
Another thought about here too was if we had success with adding those three, four of that position, yes. There's a possibility that we would not have to sell them.
Well, yeah. We were looking at that too. Yeah, it's, again, this being kind of a temporary thing, you know, we're. Ten, a couple of years, a year or a couple of years. If we can borrow well enough, we can go ahead. You know, just go back to our own. All our own drivers like that. Right now, I'm looking at this more as being a, help us out of a pitch, sort of a situation right now. We know we're already short. And bringing our own program going and we can get our own drivers coming in. Then we might be able to. No, because this, this is gonna be, this will be just a, like to say a one-year thing. That we're looking at, you know, as far as what we're gonna contract up for next year. Then we'll just have to revisit again, see where we're at and kind of go from there. Regards to the mechanic first. I think what the, we had mine was, you know, as someone who's actually a licensed mechanic, you know, they're, that's what they do. They are a mechanic. It's. It's, you know, it's not someone coming out the farm that, you know, they've done mechanic work, but they've never been on the road. They've not actually done the. The full like shop paint work. There's a lot that goes into those buses. So.
Brian brought back that right now. Cause they do work on the buses, but, um, we have a couple of drivers now that. They don't know drive, but they don't know anything about how the mechanic stuff and so if there's issues with the bus. Uh, right now. Kind of a deterrent for them to know how to drive because they don't know how to fix the problem. So it'd be nice to have somebody that would already have fixed these problems and, and if you just have the drivers drive, so. So that's gonna be the reason I think we got to that where, you know, if somebody takes care of these issues and then. You don't have someone that's like, I don't want to drive anymore because. I was told that I should know how to fix this. I don't know how to fix this and I just want to travel the bus, so.
Yes, our, our thought was if we can get to, another thing we discussed was adding a wash bay, knowing the, a heater wash bay, knowing the bus drives. So getting clean the buses up in the winter time are a good place to do it. Keep it all nice and clean and neat and tidy. Our thought was if we can do that, take care of things mechanically and take care of things cleanliness. Plus we keep updating our fleet like we've been doing, it's much easier to get, and that could be a much. Greater improvement in getting people to drive. You know, you're heading down, it makes quite a difference if, you know, you're heading down the road, everything's gonna work and the heaters are gonna work and you're not gonna freeze. Versus okay, drive in the nineties or driving something that someone kind of big to get by, they know how it works, I don't. No, that's, that's kind of a deterrent. So that's kind of some of our thoughts.
I want to say I think we've come to a conclusion that there's no easy answer.
Well, one thing we have discussed is, uh. Before with this now, Spies are gonna need to know quite soon what we have in mind to do with stuff. So it's looking really, we're gonna need a work session on this. You know, in the near future to try and come up with, okay, that's what we're gonna do. You know, whole work discussion on it. No, instead of, you know, just creating. A final answer on that.
So this is still a committee? No, it's gonna be a committee for a little bit longer?
Well. As far as what we're gonna do with Spies for next year, he needs to know soon. Cause he says it's, it's difficult. Let's say if he has to line up equipment, it's very difficult finding it. I just says right now, if he had to buy a bus, he's a year out. So we need a little run that last night was asking if he'd be willing to lease, you know. There's another bus, you know, to fill the route, you know, the lease of us must. So, so again, that's something we want to find out as well. From him, you know, how much he wants to do.
I mean, frankly, Seth, there's no easy answer to this. I mean, I appreciate you guys because I, I'm sure it's.
And this is gonna be a growing process.
But I hate to keep coming back to this. I would get paid for all this.
Well, we're already paying drivers. We're already paying a lot for bus repairs where every time we send our bucks out, it costs, so there's that piece of the budget. We're already paying a transportation director. So that would be combined, things would be combined. Yeah, so the actual Brian position would be that custodial boat person. And we're short staff with custodians. We, somebody owes on it initially. We have nobody or anything. We have, we've had people. Yeah, one time we had two people out on quarantine, you know. And so we're short people and a, and a staff that's already short. We had a custodial boat person that could. And so it would be one of those things where we would just have to. If there's a crisis, they would have to. There's no guarantee that we're gonna find. These people right away either, you know, and we need to go drive our buses right away.
No, and I mean, I, I, you know, we do the incentives and we pay. And for the transport, just things, the costs are, that, that I'll see every, but, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I have a whole thing. I understand where we are with this. We could have to do something because if we can't get our kids to school, that's a big problem. It's just looking forward, you know, I mean, we made a work session long. And we did that analysis those three, four years ago by custodial staff. I know really hard telling the size we should have three horse because there'll be many.
Well, and I think your cost is one of the reasons what scared us away from just saying, take it all over. Oh, yeah, because also, you know, now you're at the mercy, whatever the cost is.
Turn into a civic center.
You know, then. Yeah, so, yeah. That was one of the big deterrents there was, you know, how you lose all of your control over it. The cost is what it is and you're stuck with it. But it was, you know, and we just got these new buses and there goes everything. So it's going to be a train, we can pay for the position.
So superintendent Chase will pick some dates, probably in early March for work session. We'll just kind of choose what looks best for everybody. Get us all together and decide what direction we're gonna move in this. Yeah, of course. Of course, I'd like to thank the negotiating committee for all the work. It, you know, there's a lot of involved with the principal's contract, a lot of discussion, actors' work, this is a lot of work. So thank all who are involved. It, it came to a good, good conclusion. Are there any other committee meetings at all this place? All right, so then twelve point O meeting scheduled. As something Chase mentioned earlier, there is a board officers meeting Wednesday, February twenty third. At five o'clock PM. This is at the city hall with the city administrator. Our next regular meeting is, we're at seventeenth at seven o'clock. The economy comes through. And like we said.